Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, May 21st. The first things on our agenda are public hearings. We have two tonight. The first one is for a special use permit by Peter Yassis. Kim, would you read the notice, please?
Yes. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by Peter Yassis to construct a coal barn 50 by 100 for salt and milling storage and equipment at 888-7 Alexander Road in the Town of Batavia. Tax map 12-1-65. This is in an industrial zone. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at the Batavia Town Hall at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman at kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or text 219-9190 by the order of Town of Batavia Planning Board Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, this is a public hearing. Everyone has the opportunity to speak. I ask you to speak up so we can all hear you, and you can give your name and address if you wish. You don't have to do that. So, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this construction of a coal barn? Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak. My name is Mark Woodward. I'm the managing member of the Mallard Duck Club. We own 133 acres across the street from Mr. Yassis' proposed site. I'd like to express several concerns to the Planning Board about what I've read in the plan. The site that he's proposing is essentially an island that is surrounded by wetlands. Those wetlands surround the property. They run back towards Tonawanda Creek. Surface water from that area travels, and it travels onto neighboring properties. My concern is with the amount of wetlands there, including ours across the street. The idea of salt and asphalt millings, which asphalt millings essentially are, main ingredient of them is petroleum. Salt and petroleum do not mix with wetlands. And with the amount of floodwater and meltwater that hits that area, you know, my concern is that storing those type of materials is a danger to the surrounding properties and to the water. So I don't feel it's appropriate to have that type of an operation in the location that he's proposing.
Anyone else? Is Jeremy Petropowski here? He sent a letter. If he wasn't here, I was going to read it. So I can read this. This is from Jeremy. He resides on the Alexander Road. He found out there was a public hearing, and he wanted to voice his concern in how construction and storage of salt millings and construction equipment will affect his quality of life. His main concern are noise, smell, and environmental pollutions. He's lived in the Town of Batavia for close to 25 years. The noise pollution will have a direct impact on his mental health and quality of life. The thought of hearing equipment early in the morning and late into the evening upsets me. I haven't imagined every other person has smelled blacktop in the summer. The millings are no different. How as a family and a community, can we residents enjoy the days smelling blacktop millings, equipment exhaust, and when other chemicals are spilled on the ground? That leads me to the environmental impact. I owe a vacant acreage close proximity to the proposed site. There has been, has there been an environmental impact study done? My family eats venison all year. The deer we harvest are free range and have the ability to drink from the runoff of the proposed site. How will that affect our health? Please take into consideration my quality of life, my family's quality of life, and the neighborhood's quality of life. This business would affect the community in a negative way. Thank you for my concerns. Is there someone else that would like to speak? Mr. Yassis?
Well...
Yes, please.
To address some of the concerns, I mean, the millings, there might be 50 ton. So we went through this millings in Byron. If you don't manufacture them or grind them, you're okay. We run them, actually, we run them through a topsoil screen, so you don't get any petroleum at all out of them, okay? The DEC has already given us an okay in Byron for do the same. But they come to Batavia, they'll already be screened. We really use them for ourselves, okay? Instead of running back to Byron to get a load, we just reload out of Batavia. The noise, I mean, it'll basically be a storage. We store our loaders and plow equipment in the winter, in the summer there. I don't like to leave it outside. So I'm not sure where the noise and the pollution's going to come to. I mean, they're all, what would you want to say, EPA approved Tier 4 engines. I mean, you could put them in this building, and you're supposed, I wouldn't, but you're supposed to be good for it.
Do you think you have a floor in your barn?
Yeah, yeah, a concrete floor.
Concrete floor.
Yeah.
Is that where the materials are being stored as well, is in the barn?
The millings will be outside. Again, it's for our own use. I mean, if somebody wants to buy them, sure, but I'm not going to run, like I told you at the other meeting, I'm not coming all the way to Batavia to sell you a little trailer loaded with three ton of millings, you know? They're there. If you want them, great. If you don't, I'm okay with that, too. The salt will be in an enclosed building, concrete, with a paved pad floor, which I indicated on my site plan, that you will have level pad. We will also have asphalt on the outside, so when you don't, you just push it on any inside. The same, almost the same thing you got here.
It's, I was going to say, it's the same like ours.
Same thing you got.
Just smaller.
Just smaller, by far smaller. 30 by 30, 30 by 40, whatever I put on there.
What kind of equipment will you be running?
Running?
Yeah.
Basically, it's going to be for storage of equipment.
Would it be safe to assume you'd have a front-end loader, pick up dump trucks?
We will have a front-end loader to load. So here's the deal. We do a lot of storing in the Town of Batavia, city of Batavia, mostly the town. For us to, we rent now in the city. We want to own, pay to rent. So for us to go back to Byron, you're looking at, on a good road, 30, 40 minutes, 34 minutes back. We're trying to alleviate the time to go back and forth, like we do, like we rent in the city. It's boom, we didn't get loaded, get out. On the south side, there's a whole row of pine trees. We plan to leave. I want to make this thing a sound barrier.
We're normally very good with the neighbors as well, especially in the middle of the night. Our backup alarms are disconnected, long as we know no one's around, so it's not like you're going to hear backup alarms any hours of the night. Probably even over there.
Probably...
Backup alarm for being on your equipment?
Any equipment or joint, especially.
So your equipment would be running at that?
What we do is, we start calling around 2:00. By the time we get the lots cleaned, it's usually around 5:00, 5:30. We go in, our first round of salt comes out of Byron. We reload in Batavia about 6:00, and continue going.
Thank you. We'll discuss this further on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay?
If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Oh, we will. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I would just make one more comment.
Yes, sir.
Piles outside with rainwater creates runoff. And when you're on a high spot, surrounded by lowland, wetland area, that water is going to go over those materials, and it's going to be in the water system. And at the very least, I'd like to know if part of the site plan includes any type of containment for just that event. We get rainstorms, we get snow melt, we get all kinds of stuff that would cause runoff of those materials into the water and into the surrounding wetlands and properties. So at the very least, I think there needs to be some type of evidence by Mr. Yassis that you're not going to get runoff into those wetlands.
I agree. Again, the salt will be in a contained area, just like you have, with the asphalt pad. We could tip the pad in. I don't have a problem with that on the outside, so let the runoff go into the salt barn. As far as millings go, if you listen, they didn't, they don't, when you run them through a screen instead of grind them, DEC doesn't have a problem.
Yeah, I'm sure there's petroleum is all out of them.
What's that?
I'm sure there's no oil in the asphalt millings.
I mean, to me... So, I'm going to be straight up with you. The millings ain't a make or breaker, okay? We're looking for storage, storage equipment and salt reload. Millings, out. You want to take the millings out, whatever makes you happy.
Well, I mean, it's a lot easier to talk about it now than worry about it later.
Absolutely. I mean, we'd like them there. It is what it is.
And I've yet to seen a town salt barn or any salt operation where all that salt stays in the building. Unless you're backing it up, it's there.
Steve, Amit, do you have the site plan with you? I don't have it with me right now.
I think I have it with the county application.
Kathy, can I speak to something?
Yes.
Because one of the things I didn't see on the site plan was like the grade line, so it's hard to say how you're grading your plots or anything like that, because like you said, there are ways that you can make it so that runoff comes towards the road. And quite frankly, you have runoff coming from the road that's coming onto your property that's going to do the same thing. They just don't want to exacerbate that.
Because John, Louis, you already have, no, it's rolled. So if that's bad, then the runoff from the road is bad as well. And that's throughout the world.
Yeah. And like I said, I think our job here is to make sure we don't exacerbate that. So if we can do some things on the site to make sure that it stays, you know, like you said, if you get the, if you get the pad elevated so that the runoff stays contained on your site, that helps.
You could put a small burr.
That's why I asked about where you're storing materials, because I thought that, I remembered you saying that you were storing salt in the salt barn.
Yeah.
And that salt barn is fully enclosed.
Yeah.
I don't disagree that some salt is going to get out of the salt barn. When you're loading your trucks, it falls over the outsides, everything else. But similar, they're putting that same salt down the road. Neighbors are probably putting some on the driveways, et cetera. So it's a matter for this board to really consider, is it excessive?
Okay, would anyone else like to speak? We have another public hearing coming up. Okay, if you change your mind, you still have an opportunity later on the agenda. I'm going to close the public hearing now at 7:15, and I'm going to open one for application for a special use permit by New Leaf Energy to operate a solar energy system on Wharton Dyke Road. Would you read it, please, Kim?
Yeah. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by New Leaf Energy Incorporated to construct and operate a 5-megawatt AC ground-mounted utility-grade solar energy system at 9327 Wharton Dyke Road in the Town of Batavia. This land is zoned agricultural residential. Tax map 17 dot dash 1 dash 17. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at the Batavia Town Hall at 7:15 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman at kjazinski@townofbatavia.com or text 219-9190 by order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Thank you. Now, Mark, did you want to make a short presentation?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
My name is Will Nieves. I'm the project developer with New Leaf Energy. We have Dr. Casey Rose and Mark Kenworth from Birdman Anthony. As mentioned, this is a 5-megawatt AC community solar farm located on Wharton Dyke Road. I'll talk a little bit about what we're working on and, you know, kind of why we chose the site. The site is relatively close to the Batavia substation. There are some, there are some proposed double-phase to three-phase upgrades all along Wharton Dyke Road, where up to where it intersects with Route 33. We'll head west there to just outside of Williams Park to the Batavia substation, where's the, thank you, east, as of, east of here, and it's all backwards. But in any case, we're going to follow the three-phase lines to the Batavia substation, and there's some anticipated work at the substation there to interconnect the site. Currently, we're working with National Grid to complete the engineering study needed, and we expect to have those results in about six weeks from now. At that point, you know, we'll have the full scope of work necessary to interconnect the project. As I mentioned, we chose the site due to its proximity to the substation, as well as its location kind of in the community. We like that it was tucked away, naturally screened on most sides. And then also, you know, just from a wetland permitting impact, the site has no anticipated wetland impacts. It's flat, minimal grading, minimal tree clearing. So overall, it was a good site. Landowner is currently leasing a portion of the land out to the, to the property to the north here, the whileers or wheelers, and they will potentially continue to farm the open field that's going to be left, you know, but we will be, you know, replacing that activity with the solar farm. I'm going to let Casey talk to you about the kind of nitty-gritty of the project and any details, and then obviously, if there's any questions that we can answer, feel free to ask.
The project site is a 51.3 acre parcel, but we are only encompassing approximately 15.74 acres, which includes the fenced array, the access driveway, and the equipment pads. The fenced array itself is 15.525 acres with a 435-foot-long driveway that is 20 feet wide, and it is a pervious driveway. And then the equipment pads total 0.051 acres, and this is for both the equipment pads that are inside the fence and outside the fence. And our tree clearing is limited to just 0.06 acres, so not that much. We have three new utility poles proposed for ground-mounted equipment, along with the ground-mounted equipment pads for interconnection. Our setbacks, as shown from the, or to the north, is 75 feet to the fence line, and then to the east, this direction, our setback is 764 feet. To the south is 464 feet, and then to the west, which is the front of the property, is 200 feet. And these are all within the setback requirements. And our maximum height at max vertical tilt is 10 feet plus or minus. And as far as the project coverage, we're allowed up to 50%. We are only 30.7%, and that includes the proposed fence, driveway, and the equipment pads. Construction is environmentally friendly. Only minor amounts of excavation and grading work will be required. As Will mentioned, there are wetlands on site, but we will have no impact to them. Upon completion, the site areas disturbed by the project will be a honeybee-furried mix of clover. During construction, it will generate about 15 vehicle trips per day, 25 arriving and 25 exiting, which includes construction-related delivery, I can't speak today, deliveries and employees. Hours of operation during construction are generally Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. After construction, the system will only operate during daylight hours, and there will be minimal visits to the site, mainly just for maintenance or if something happens to it. And then the most important thing is that there are no energy storage batteries proposed, so you will not hear any batteries on the site. And then lastly, during operation, the site will generate no traffic or noise, there is no nighttime lighting, and there are no nearby glare receptors whether to neighboring dwellings, buildings, or motorists. And maintenance is limited to mowing up to two times a year and an occasional visit by electrical service techs.
Thank you. Okay? Okay, would anyone like to speak on this project? Yes, sir?
Now, going back through the availability of three-phase power, and you said it's close to the substation, is that the one on 98 Pike Road? Because that's about 3.1 miles.
It's the substation in downtown Batavia, sandwiched between Franklin Street and Walnut.
Okay, how, so you're going to run three-phase wires from there to Batavia?
I think the three-phase needs to be brought down Wharton Dyke Road from 33, and then I don't know if they're going to upgrade the three-phase between Wharton Dyke and the substation. That's already a pretty heavy one, and we don't know for sure what all the improvements that are going to be required by National Grid. You did indicate, Will, that there could be some minor equipment upgrades in the, in the substation here.
That's right. So that substation is kind of a hub there. There's transmission lines, subtransmission lines going through there, and also what this operates on, which is distributed line, distribution lines, which is what feeds, you know, homes and businesses. There is, and I wrote it down because I knew this question would come up, 8,250 feet of two-phase and three-phase upgrades, so that's the two-line going up Wharton Dyke Road. Essentially, they'll just add a third line to those existing poles. Everything along 33, as Mark mentioned, is pretty heavy three-phase, so you know, there might be some, you know, kind of minor upgrades to certain poles if needed, if National Grid determines. But the other site of major upgrades is going to be at the substation, where we might have to, you know, do some, do some work on the transformers or some other equipment to accept the power there and just maintain kind of the stability of the network that comes into that substation. That substation is actually two substations in one. It's a little complicated there.
If you're going to come from Wharton Dyke heading south, you got the railroad tracks there, and there's no power lines going across there. And my understanding was, back a long time ago, they put them on, there's some roads that have it, but I don't believe Wharton Dyke has power going across that railroad. How do you do that?
That's, that's correct. So we're going to be running north.
If you run north, you run south. If you come from 33 to run to that parcel, that's south, that's across, that is, railroad tracks probably a half a mile from 33, and there's no wires going across there now. And then what I was always understanding, that they didn't allow electric going across a lot of roads. So I'm just, my question is, have they changed the ruling, or how are you going to get the power from 33 down to a mile and 3/4 down Wharton Dyke Road?
Well, there's power already going down Wharton Dyke Road.
Not over the railroad.
Well, it doesn't just end. It kind of continues, it probably goes under the railroad there. I don't actually have the specifics.
I don't think so. I think all the feed, I think what it does is stop. I think the feed is from Wharton Dyke to railroad, and then from, then everything else is from the south. That's my understanding. If you go down there, you won't see no wires going over the road, Wharton Dyke Road.
And again, I'm not, I can't recall, I took the drive today.
This three-phase power is key to running the solar farm.
Sure.
And, and I always thought, if you go from there to Batavia, that's got to be almost five and a half miles to that substation, but that's, but how do you get there?
Yeah, sure. So we do try to stay within five miles of the substation. And again, I don't have the map in front of me to look at the whole route, but I did take the drive today and, you know, followed the two, the double line all the way up to where we're connecting a three-phase. Maybe I just did not realize that I crossed over a railroad track.
Where did you find the three-phase? Where's the person?
It's on 33, right at the intersection.
Oh, yeah, 33.
Right at the intersection, most of the time.
Can I ask a question that might expand upon this? I assume you have interconnection approval?
We do not have interconnection approval yet.
You do not?
But we're working with the utility. We're in the Caesar study process, and we've done the preliminary feasibility study with National Grid. They've told us that the interconnection is feasible, and now we're in the process of getting the full scope of work to do the upgrades. The process goes, we will get that Caesar study back, and at that point, we will pay 25% deposit for those upgrades, and that's when the official interconnection agreement and quote-unquote approval happens. But we've done a feasibility study with National Grid and have been told that the interconnection is feasible. Now it's a matter, like I said, of getting the full scope of work and the cost for that sort of thing.
You have time to work on it. We weren't going to take any action tonight. So any questions that you bring up and suggestions they can take back and work on, there won't be any action taken on this project tonight.
Sure. And I'm happy to take down your info and provide you with, you know, if you had some questions about how National Grid is going to make that connection. But like I mentioned, we did the feasibility study, and they did say that the pathway is viable, and we have to take that.
It wouldn't be up to you, National Grid.
I was going to say, we have to take National Grid.
National Grid won't be the one determining how they're going to provide that, that third leg of energy to that site.
Yes.
And you will have no, basically no say. It's their, it's their power plant.
Exactly. Yeah, we go to them first and say, hey, is this possible? They say yes, and then we ask them further.
Yeah, that makes sense. All secondary roads don't have three-phase power.
Okay, there's a gentleman behind you that's been waiting to speak. Go ahead, sir.
No, you could finish up here.
Oh, okay.
If you look around, there are 98, 33, 5, all that, and they did run three-phase power on a secondary road, but it only went partway. And so that was just my question, so how are you going to connect the dots?
That'll be directed to sit on by National Grid when the next phase of the study is between.
Exactly. Yeah, National Grid will provide us with the full scope of work and cost, and included in that will be, you know, if we are crossing a railroad track, they will tell us, you know, how we're going to get across that, you know, whether under or over.
If you don't have interconnection, you're dead in the water.
Exactly. Yeah. So that's why the very first step of the process is to determine feasibility, you know, theoretical feasibility, and that's where we are now.
Question, I have a question regarding the clearing. Okay, so the set pictures that you proposed here, pretty much on Wharton Dyke here, show a full tree line.
Yeah.
And I believe you said the clearing was about 0.6 acres? So I'm assuming that that's including...
So 0.06.
0.06?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that that is pretty much the clearing for the driveway, right?
Yeah.
But when the proposed rendering here just run the drive, that's a pretty big window. Would you be opposed in putting, you know, pushing the power lines further back and providing a natural barrier or, you know, for like trees or future growth so that they slowly close, shrink that coming down from the road, beyond the solar?
I don't know, I don't know how much latitude we have in moving the interconnect east and west, if you will. We can talk, I can ask Will to talk to National Grid about that. We haven't proposed any vegetative screening yet, but we're looking for public comment input, input from the board, and input from our town engineer here. And there is, Will had a discussion with the landowner earlier, and we've already just, she's already asked for some screening behind her house in that gap that you see in the... she's already asked for some screening behind her house in that gap that you see in the other visual sim. So that'll get filled in. Driveway width is wide and that visual sim does make it look rather extensive, I guess. But keep in mind, I don't believe there's any residential driveway or residents directly across from that driveway. And for the motors on Wharton Dyke Road, the view will only last for a couple of seconds if they happen to turn or look that way. Nonetheless, we are open to strategizing about vegetative screening in that entrance area.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
Yeah.
We will.
And I just want to add to this on the point about how much latitude we have for National Grid. Their sort of, they have, you know, standards that we have to abide by. And, um, they would like their, their point of interconnection, that last pole to be no more than 50 feet from the, from the right of way. And, um, you know, I, I don't know what that distance is right now, but, uh, that's, that's their specification.
So, I mean, as far as the pole placement, you know, which day is screened to the, you know, to the inside of the poles?
It's possible.
I think, I think that would be possible.
Yeah, we, we've had discussions with the board before about number of poles. And I can't get it down less than three now, I can tell you that.
We noticed straightaway they were three.
The last time.
We figured, we, we got, we got National Grid to agree that you're the last time, so, you know.
Yeah, we went from five to four to three to the last time. It was a tough battle, but we got there, so.
Person in the back had a question?
Yes, I was going to, there's two. Go, go ahead. You both have given that opportunity, go ahead.
I just want to make a step about the existing trees and vegetation that's along that area. Also along everywhere, there are a lot of dead ash trees that could jeopardize your infrastructure, um, but aren't going to provide any screening long-term for the foreseeable future. So as a living in 9352 Wharton Dyke Road, I'd love to see some additional screening there. Going dead, a lot of that tree line is going to, I have to come down or will fall down on its own someday soon. Um, my second question, lifespan on the panels?
They are guaranteed by the manufacturer for 25 years. Uh, but they are expected to, and that's their sort of guarantee for production. Um, they are expected to last longer than that.
So what, what is the end of life process? Do you do a forklift wholesale changeout or is, is they fail? Do they monitor as they fail? Do you remove them, change them out? What is the end of life?
Sure. Mark, do you want to answer that or?
So at the end of the service life, the life of the project, there's two options, as I understand it well. One is to re-panel the site with new panels, probably some new equipment. And option two is to remove the system. Now, the owner-operator will be responsible for removal, but to assure that removal, the town will hold what we call a decommissioning bond. And we've been through this process with the town before. They have to, we, the estimate for decommissioning has already been submitted with the application package. It's reviewed by the town engineer. The town attorney gets involved because the town likes to have a decommissioning agreement in place as well as a decommissioning bond. So that tries to assure the public that we have the decommissioning covered should the owner-operator fail to do so.
Yeah, and that's the owner across the street. It's more mature, these things just don't...
Okay, the other gentleman, you've been waiting a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I have something I'd like you to read and copy for me.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's hard to read. Give it to me.
It's all in reference to site.
To what?
To the, um, having protection from seeing the panels, vegetation, which, as we've gone through the documents, I haven't seen any vegetation there. There is only two pages to read there, and there's a bunch of pictures. If you would like to, could you speak up? I can't read.
What's it?
Well, that's not asking for a reading.
Oh, oh.
I'm believing it will come across there.
Thank you. This is well put together.
What are the comments in his letter has to do with the location of the permanent driveway? We are working with Steve and Tom on, and the landowner have an alternative access for the construction period only. Admittedly, the site disis from that existing entrance, it's not the greatest. But there's a, the owners, the landowners' residence driveway is at the peak of a knoll. And we're looking at putting a temporary access possibly to the south of her driveway. We just got to negotiate with her a little more on the fine tuning that and still maintaining safe site disis for the construction vehicles and employees after they manage an accident every day, every workday. So we've been made aware of that when we're talking with the town. The permanent driveway, if it remains there, which we're hoping it will, we've even offered to put up advance warning signs for trucks entering or accidents, something to that effect. So that, but once it's in operation, that driveway will generate very little traffic. I'm talking, we talked about 50 trips a day during construction. That you'll be looking to generate 50 trips a year if it's, once that's in operation. Because it's, it's maintenance vehicles, electrical maintenance, periodic, month we have to bet at most, and then mowing twice a year. We're already working on that driveway issue.
We'll get into that with the site plan.
Yep. Then we'll have the solution hopefully worked out with the engineering department.
Steve, do you have anything to add?
I don't really have anything.
Does anyone else have any input or comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. My name is Michael McCarty. I live on Beaver Road. My house is 1.3 miles away from this site. I do live in the town of Alexander, so I understand this is Batavia planning, okay? Just want to make the comment, this is, this is really not the venue for it, but I, I need to be on record so everyone understands. This property beat is being, it's not really being divided up. They're adding improvements to the property. Still, as they said, it's, it's labeled as residential agricultural property, but the solar panels will add value to the property, okay? My neighbors and everybody around me, everyone I talk to are fighting tax rate, taxes. The raising taxes is unbelievable, okay? This property, as I figured out in the math, each acre is worth 200 and... 200, $2,526.80 per acre. My property, 11 acres, through the assessment, and this is for my, for 2023 because the new assessments have come out into the South of the GNC website. Mine is $3,086 per acre, okay? These solar, uh, farms, I guess is the right word, that are going up, are going to have an impact on all the residents. And I'm talking Genesee County, I'm talking anywhere they go. We, we as homeowners are fighting corporate farms that want our properties. We're fighting people who are leaving the cities and coming to rural areas because it's safer to live in my, in my neighborhood, okay? That's why these property values are skyrocketing. And this is just another thing on the list that is putting pressure on all my neighbors who are middle-income, middle-class, if that still exists, or less, okay? And they're feeling it hard. And this is just another, another venue. I'm not, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, I'm not saying a good thing. I'm saying that the impact it has on, on assessments and the impact it has on, on me being able to live in my residence, when I plan to live, hope to live for the rest of my life, like my neighbors have, it's causing an ill effect. So I just want to get that on the record so you understand.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I, um, just get a little dialogue going here on what I'm requesting in the letters that I sent you? I can make it short and sweet. It says in the documents, uh, letter to Kirkland Anthony dated April 1st, a landscaping plan if required or warranted to provide vegetative screening. I haven't seen that, and as far as I know, it doesn't exist. If I, I sent you lots of pictures of projects that the town of Batavia has done, um, which are... If you look at the last pictures I sent you, that's vegetative screening. Uh, it's hard to say anything good about it, okay? When I look at the law that was passed by the town of Batavia, let me find the date in here. It's actually Town of Batavia Solar Energy Law Draft 71621. They have very strict requirements for screening invisibility. I can read you what that says, but you already know what it says. I haven't seen that occur on one solar site around here. If you go on out to Bushville, the one on Route 5, that's the last pictures I sent you in your pamphlet. It's a joke. There's some evergreen trees that are half-dead, that are spaced probably six, eight feet apart. You don't even know they're there. I would like this to have exactly what the town has specified. I want a comprehensive plan that will show that we do not see these solar panels from the road. It's outlined in the town's paper. And I'm asking that you take that seriously.
Well, we, we do take this seriously. We did provide it under submission application, as I said before, because we look forward to input from the town renewing agencies for that and from the public. I suspect, will we come before the planning board next time? We will have a landscaping plan.
Well, I've given you what I'm looking for. And I'm looking for to the letter of the law, what the town requires, to the letter of the law, okay? And I would like to be informed of that when you have it so I can see it. All I'm asking for is what they require, which is what I require.
Okay, we're taking input today, so when we work on it, we'll, we'll combine what we've heard tonight. And you, you can come to any of our meetings. I put the agenda on the website on Friday afternoon. So the Friday before the meeting, you'll be able to know if there's going to be one.
When I drive over to Batavia and look at all the solar sites, there isn't one that is even close to what the town requires. Somebody is letting something fall through.
Some of those were, were approved before 2021, so that, that's why the new law wasn't acting.
Correct.
And a lot of that is, is, you know, this board is at our discretion of where we want to see that. One of the things I saw in your letter was the visual assessment. They provided it to us. We haven't commented on it yet because we just got it this week. Uh, but we will, you know, comment on it as well. That's, you know, we're listening to your comments.
I'm, I'm just, as a homeowner, he's here, he's a homeowner right across the street. We don't want to have a visual impact on our progress. And I believe the town is saying that that is what they expect also. And as my neighbor brought up, there's a bunch of dead ash trees up there, which are in the process of falling over. I'm thinking, the new leaf is thinking that those are offering some visuals. If they did, it would be a six-month visual because there's, they're pretty much stripped now, but they certainly don't do anything in the winter. So I would like to think, again, the letter of the law, what the town requires, and I'd like to think that there would be something prepared for that. But also that it would be maintained. The one in Bushville isn't maintained. Half the trees are dead.
We learn from that. You don't put evergreens on, you don't put evergreens on berms. They don't get water that way.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, I'm learning from them because I never paid attention until there's one in my backyard. Now I'm looking at it and saying, boy, that visual barrier, if those trees are invisible, pretty much invisible.
And, and there is a reason why we revised the code 2021 because we saw some of those things happening.
Again, I'm new to this. This is not my thing, but I'm just asking that you take it seriously. We spend a lot of time looking at these things. And I'm just asking that the town does with the screening invisibility.
We will do that, but we also will listen to what the neighbors say. Because similarly, there was a, a different solar farm where we actually wanted to see some additional buffering, but the neighbor is directly adjacent to it. We don't want any more trees there. We don't mind seeing this color fills, which kind of took off by surprise because that's not the norm.
You're, you're, there are two neighbors here now, and I think the others, I'm going to guess, somebody mentioned that Judy wanted some screening behind her house. So there's another neighbor. I'm, I'm just going to guess that if you talk to them, they would like screening and, and a quality screen.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else? Okay, we're going to take all of this into consideration. We've, we've got a ways to go on this. And, uh, like I said before, you can check for the agenda the Fri, the Friday before the meeting. And, uh, you'll know if we're going to discuss it. I can't tell you if we're going to discuss it at the next meeting. It depends on how fast things move along, how they address the engineers' concerns. So we still have some work to do on it.
There is 62 days. There is 62 days, I think, before you have to make it, yeah, up to 62 days and, oh, here. And that's what we agreed to extend, as we...
So you can keep, you can keep an eye on this project. We're not doing anything with it tonight.
Yeah, and we meet the first and third, right, first and third Tuesdays of every month. And last, when you go to the website, if you don't have any agenda items, we're not going to come meet. Because, I mean, we like each other, but not that much.
You're saying that for us to look on, we won't get notice, just look on the website and see what's on there.
For, for public hearings, people within 500 feet of the project get notices.
I'm within 500.
But generally, but that's just for the public hearing. Generally for meetings, you have to go to the website the Friday before to look at what the agenda is. It's a bunch of...
You said the first and third.
The, the, the meetings are first and third Tuesdays, and as Kathy indicated, she puts them on the website the Friday before.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now. It's, um, 7:45. Uh, that doesn't mean that you can't continue to give input. You can email us, you can call us, you can call the town staff. Uh, if you come up with something that you want us to know, let us know. Because this is a project that, that we're working on and it's in progress. So let us know if you, if there's anything that we should know. Okay, thank you for all your input. I appreciate it. Now, we're going to go on to our regular meeting now. So I'm going to call that to order at 7:45. And we'll first pledge to the flag. Flag is here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. He will call please, Kim.
Paul McCalla. Paul McCalla.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Wong. Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany Whitcomb. Mike Dana.
Here.
Kathy.
Here. Okay, uh, Mike Dana will be voting tonight as an alternate member for Brett, who couldn't make it tonight. Uh, did everyone look at their minutes? We had three sets of minutes from the last meeting, two on the public hearing. We'll take them one at a time. We'll start with the regular town board meeting for, um, May 7. Motion by Paul McCalla, second event, Paul McCalla. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next one is a public hearing on East Coast Speedway. Motion by Paul McCalla, second event, Brooks Holly. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the next one is, uh... Oh, this is, I'm burned, burned here, no.
Siege for biogas.
What's that?
Would be siege for biogas, the biogas one?
Oh, with biogas, okay. Yep, I see it now. Okay, did everyone read the public hearing on biogas? Paul McCalla again, you read them, it's good. There's a second, Mike? Mike Dana? Additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're going to go right into our agenda items, which is... Oh, first of all, the single one to speak on the agenda items. The student, she doesn't speak tonight. Any, any, anything they want to say? Okay, then now we're going to go on to the, the application by Mr. Gassus for a special use permit. He wants to construct a storage building. He wants to construct a storage building on the 8887 Rose Road. It's in an industrial zone, so that he needs a special use permit. We need to do a seeker on this. And before we can do that, we sought lead agency, and we got replies from the county DOT and DEC. And no one has any objection to us being the lead agency. So I would like a motion to assume that. Paul Markhazy, seconded by Mike Dana. Call, please.
Paul Markhazy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do our seeker a little different again. We've got Don back. He's going to review it. We've got Steve and Matt here to help us. And we've got a few things to think about now, because we did have, we did have some comments. So we'll take these one at a time.
Okay, and the responses, a no means small. Either a no completely, not it, not pertinent, or a small impact may occur. A yes is a moderate to large impact may occur. Impact on land, I have as a no. Impact, you know, you need to, anyone need to speak up? If you want to discuss it any further? Impact on geological features, have it as a no. Here being small, impact may occur, or no. Impacts on surface water, have it as a no. Impact on groundwater, have it as a no. Impact on flooding, no. Impacts on air, no. Impact on plants and animals, is a no. Impact on agricultural resources, is a no. Impact on aesthetic resources, is a no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, is a no. Impact on open space and recreation, is a no. Impact on critical environmental area, is a no. Impact on transportation, is a no. Impact on energy, a no. Impact on noise, odor, and light, is a no. Impact on human health, is a no. Consistency with community plans, impact is no. Consistency with community character, is a no. I move a negative to... Move a negative to this assessment.
Does there a second? The motions are in main.
Yeah, I'll second.
Paul McCullough will second that. Does anyone want to discuss this any further before we take a vote? We talked about noise, we talked about things, but also, it seems to be a little impact. And when we work on the special use permit, we can try to mitigate anything that would cause a problem.
It appears on the plan here, they're almost 200 feet from the wetlands. There's a buffer that's required of 100, and they're almost in many areas twice that.
Yeah, you've already checked the wetlands, right?
I had it delineated. The wetland is delineated through DEC. It coming on a small corner. So you'll see that they moved everything south a little bit to satisfy them. He was okay with it.
So the only concern, I guess, that I would say is, you're going to be using gravel and not hard surfaces, so...
Okay, well, that'll be on the special use permit.
Special use, that's fine.
Yeah. Is there anything else on the speaker, anything regarding that?
Just for the public's information, a special use permit can be up for review every year.
That's a control that we do have. Should something not be working out, we can bring you back in here and see what we can do about it.
So a small discussion I have with my son is, basically, we salt about 65 times a year in the winter. Basically, we put the equipment away in there in spring, just same we do where the place we rent. We have cameras there. Were we there a month ago? It's not like there's going to be trucks in and out, and cars in and out, but it's basically storage.
Yeah, we understand that.
It's not, we're not going to...
We have a motion on the table right now. Let's take our vote on our motion. We have a motion by Don, seconded by Paul McCullough.
Don?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul McCullough. Paul Markhazy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, now we can talk about the site plan. We can talk about your driveway and anything else that the board has questions about.
So you're not going to have any maintenance of vehicles or anything on this site?
It's storage. We won't make anything, I mean...
Sort of in the back loader for the winter time when you're loading stuff.
In the winter?
Right.
There'll be a truck there? Yeah, there'll be a truck there, and there'll be a loader there for a back horse to load the thing with. In the summer, I don't like to leave my stuff outside. It all goes in a enclosed building. That's what the enclosed building is for. Half of that building or less will be heated for the truck and the machine to load it with. Other than that, it's storage.
And the building is on a foundation that has maybe a curb on it or something to stop the runoff, even if water comes through the building?
The building will be one foot above current, what do you call it, sea level?
Great.
Okay, great, great. The same with the sulfur, and the building will be one foot above. I think I explained it in the site plan. There'll be no runoff. I mean, it isn't going to have any more runoff than it has currently.
Any of our are going to have a hard surface.
They'll have concrete floor.
What?
Concrete floor.
I just said the concrete floor.
And the sulfur will have asphalt floor. And it's in the site plan of, I think it's eight inches of gravel, three inches of binder, and an inch and a half of top.
Where the sulfur is, it's completely sealed all along the ground, so it can't be clogged.
At least three sides. What I'd, something I'd like to do is, what's going on? I was going to go, I put like a curtain across it sometimes. Same thing you would see at a tent, you know, on a cable. I mean, it's probably more closed than what you have here, or any other town has.
Will there be a drain in there?
No.
So where will a drain? Okay, so no drain, no French drain or anything into the ground?
Why would you do that?
I don't know.
If water can't get in there, you can't have runoff.
You keep it contained. Because it salts a lot of water. Absolutely not. It's contained.
Same with the milling.
I mean, the millings will be on the asphalt's hands. But you still, again, you have to understand that, as long as you're not manufacturing them, and you're screening them, you run through a touch or a screen, you're not breaking them apart in any way.
Yeah, but grain water, grain and oil don't mix, and there's control aids.
It's not any different than if the side of the road is broken up? Same thing? It's really broken up asphalt, is what millings are.
Use that up, show that up.
Okay, so that's not any different. You have the same drain of runoff as you do a road. If I was manufacturing, I say, yeah, I got to get a permit, and it's got to be all... I just ran through this three months ago.
On that, where are the, on that diagram, we have two buildings. 50 by 100 and 30 by...
30 by 30, I think.
30 by 30. 30 by 30, you're solid.
Yep.
And your 50 by 100 is where your...
Storing equipment.
Holder equipment. And that's going to be stored. So where are the millings going to be stored? Because the other portion of the site looks to be gravel, not hard surface. So that means, that means anything stored on top of gravel is going to reach you.
I could put an asphalt pad in for it.
And I think that's what they were concerned about. And I get it, you know, because it is petroleum, and it does rain.
I prefer it too, because...
You know, if you're going to leave it outside uncovered, if you're, it's a building, it's a different story, obviously, but...
Would you be inclined to put, for the millings, an asphalt pad in? I don't know what you call it, but there are those concrete blocks.
Yeah, two by two by five, six foot.
Yeah, and stack them up just to contain them.
Sure, I just need one area open to get in together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem either.
As long as you can contain them.
If that's what makes everybody happy, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
Okay, well, we've got two things that we're talking about. We're talking about a site plan, we're talking about a special use permit. Before we can go any further, we have to issue a special use permit in order for him to construct this in a commercial zone. Is it industrial zone? Okay. What you had just said about putting something under the milling, that if we were going to do a special use permit, we would have to list that as one of the things. Which is requirements. Was there someone...
I'll second that.
Yeah, hard surface with Jersey barriers on three sides.
Jersey. Don't call it... Some of those are real tall.
Okay, not the big ones.
Concrete blocks.
Concrete blocks?
Yeah, yeah.
You just want the two...
Yeah, about two by two by five, six foot long.
That's fine, they're thicker, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other requirements?
So you're not talking a lot of millings anyways?
No. 4,500 tons in another location. We're probably going to put 100 here.
Now, is your building going to be lit?
Yes.
It will be lit at night?
Yes.
And you know that you have to point the light down?
Yes. I already gone through it with Troy.
Okay.
It was a building down the street, and he acted, like a reflector or something. He already warned me.
Okay.
I was really concerned about the noise pollution.
Well, there was some talk about the noise. What you had told us is that you go when everybody's sleeping, it sounds like.
It would be, it would be 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. And to the south, it goes uphill, and there's a row of pines. I mean, there's probably 150 feet full of pines that we're not touching. I just soon have a nice barrier to my neighbors. To the south, to the north, is the wetlands.
The concern I have is, what kind of trucks? Are we talking sickwhealers, are we talking...
No, sickwhealers.
Okay. During the hours of operation, probably during the evening, as you stated, or, I'm sorry, in the early mornings, 2:00 AM is when you start plowing. In the wintertime.
Right.
Just during the day, I've heard, witnessed your trucks buzzing down, you know, the northern part of Batavia. And they're loud.
Um, we retired them.
Little ones?
Yeah, we retired them.
I used to drive it.
Yeah, he complained enough way to put them up around.
Steve or Matt, do you have anything that we would need to require for the special use permit?
I don't think for the special use. I mean, you're already hitting the points. I don't know if you're going to do hours of operation or anything, but... We had asked for the containment and all those things in our engineering review letter, along with a, DEC does not require stormwater permit for this. But just in the order of business, we require something similar. Essentially, all the same details and all the same grading, and again, to ensure that there's, you know, not contaminated runoff off-site. And, you know, that's the main purpose, to keep everything on-site and contained, so... Which is, you know, which is done lots and lots of places, so...
Why would DEC not require a stormwater?
It's under an acre. And then, we've asked, and I'm not sure if we have yet, talked to DOT. We just want to ensure that the driveway meets their requirements.
We'll have to put a new driveway in. I want to put a new driveway in. I mean, because you're moving from residential to commercial. And I've done four of them, so I know that I have to get a new driveway permit. And I already have an engineer on board to make that happen.
Yeah, so those are more site plan review comments, and, you know, there's more of those. But it's typical, you know, most projects, that, you know, they still have to meet all of our engineering requirements.
We're kind of talking about both at once, but we need to make two separate motions. So, have you got that, Kim? Good girl. Okay, that'd be the special use permit. I entertain a motion for that. Brooks Holly makes the motion, seconded by...
The special use permit's going to have the...
The requirements for the milling to have.
Yeah.
For millings, the...
Yeah, I think it's going to be part...
Well...
Or is that the special use?
I think we need to list the special use permit, so we can go back and...
Can I see the, can I see the plan? One second.
The plan, yes.
Yeah. So I guess my question was, is where on your proposed site plan are these millings going to be? Because it's not listed here, it just says gravel area, gravel area.
Gravel area is where, the gravel area that's on there is the area to turn the trucks around. The rest will be green space, all mowed out. That's the gravel area.
So from my perspective, we need to, we need from you, where are these millings are going to be put? Because we're going to put that in a special use, it's going to be on here with a hard surface pad, so we want to know where that's going to be, right?
Yep, it'll be west, if I got my burn straight, yes, it'll be west of the sulfur. Toward 98way, which will give me even further away from the wetlands.
You can have their sounds, yeah?
Sure. I mean, I'm not...
So it'd be next, would it be next to your storage building then?
No.
No, the 30 by 30.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the storage, that's the...
That's the proposed sulfur.
That's the sulfur.
Getting west of the sulfur.
The millings would be closer to 98.
Yes.
So it'd be directly down from your sulfur.
Looking at it, the barn is here, sulfur, closest to the road, we have a small pile of millings. Again, I mean, don't get hung up on a giant pile of millings.
No, that's fine, you know.
You're accessing, basically, you're saying you're accessing both buildings from the north. The access would be, you know, around the north side still.
Yes, yes.
Yep, got it.
I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
You know, I think you just need it to be, you know, where it's going to be.
So the special use permit would be the hard surface with the blocks.
Right.
And it would be west of the sulfur storage building.
Correct.
And I think we should also talk about, he wants to put 100 tons there. I would say we limit that to 100 tons.
I'm good with that. Easily, if there's water there. And I'm okay with a hard surface. I don't want to dig into dirt. And I'm okay with the blocks, because when you load, you push into them. It's a way left.
I think we're making it part of the motion, so that makes sense to me.
Yeah, it will be part of the special use permit.
I would agree with that, I would agree with that as a...
This one, the special use permit to be written correctly. That's what you were getting at.
Before I go into that, as long as you're having a discussion...
Pardon me?
As long as you're having a discussion, I would like to make the point that...
Yes.
I'm very skeptical about the noise as well, and I, I'm surprised that we would take a heavy equipment contractor at his word that it's going to be quiet.
You told me a group.
I'm just saying I'm skeptical, because it's in your interest to tell the board that it's going to be quiet. There's no way for anybody to know that that's going to be quiet.
But that's what we're on.
The one observation by the board was that you've got loud trucks that go up and down the road. So I just think you're discounting the noise factor. I don't live there.
The loud truck.
I would be a lot more concerned if I lived there, but, you know, you heard comments from somebody who does live there.
Well, that's why we can bring people in with a special use permit. Should we get a lot of complaints, we would come in and try to mitigate it somehow.
Right. Right. And a special use permit, if it becomes an issue, can be pulled and cease operations. Not that we've gone down that path, but.
We had modified it too, every year we modify it.
That's the purpose of a special use permit, to basically make sure that what we want them to do and what they said they're going to do, they're going to do. And it's our ability to say, well, okay, if you're not going to do that, your special use permit is gone, and you can't do what you're doing at all anymore there.
We can't make everyone happy, but we can try to make it okay.
Right, and we realize there's no perfect solution because there is going to be noise. There's, there are loaders, and, you know, those are diesel, diesel machines, they do make noise. So yes, that, you know, that's a fact, but we will try to mitigate that in hours of operation, which we can, which we can say, okay, you're allowed to operate during these hours. And we would, we have to work with them to tell us what their hours are really going to be.
Well, that's a tough one, right?
It is a tough one.
You're plowing in the middle of the night.
Because you don't know, sometimes, you know, a big storm comes up, there are always certain circumstances that no matter how good you try to plan, you can't see some emergency that comes up, you know, and that's, and I think people understand that if it's, it's an emergency, it's a kind of thing where that isn't a huge issue, it's just a recurrence every week that that becomes the problem. Does that make sense?
Anything to your terms?
Yes.
So, I'm thinking, talking with my son, in a lot of our cases, if it snows like late, we can usually handle it with a round out of fire and comfortable hours that we'd be comfortable with this. Again, we have neighbors, we have neighbors at our shop out here complaint one at any time of the day or night. So like at 10:00 at night, from 10 o'clock till 8:40, 30, 5:00 in the morning, I'm okay with that. I don't want to be up there anyway. Know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That'll give me time to be friends and speak some talk.
Let's try it and see how it works. We do have a motion on the floor. It was from Brooks, and it was seconded by Paul McCauley. Brooke, please, and this is only on the special use permit. This allows you to build your pole barn.
Yep.
Okay.
Brooks?
Yes.
Paul McCauley?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, one more thing is the site plan, and I think we pretty much discussed that, unless someone has any input. Steve or Matt, have you got anything on the site plan?
Not anything else that I've already covered.
I've got yours here, Steve. Don't lose it.
There are still items you're working through with the ethic, I guess.
Yeah.
So we've made the site plan approval contingent upon engineers.
Yes.
So what is exactly across the street from us?
What is it?
What's across the street? Like 98, basically, right?
Yeah, Duck Marsh.
What?
A Duck Marsh.
Okay.
If I might say something. I'm just here because I recreationally use that land at times, and it's beautiful. Mr. Woodward spent a lot of money on a lot of elaborate flood control, and when you talk about petroleum leaching into the soil, I looked at the aquifer map today, it goes right under 98, and it goes to the west. I would just hate to go hunt someday and find, I know it was slick on the marsh because somebody spilled 28 gallons of diesel, whatever, and you know what one drop of oil looks like? It's everywhere. It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of containment. I know that the rule is one acre, so the D E says, D E C says, no big deal, it's only one acre, but.
Well, that's for the stormwater permitting. There are rules and regulations for any spills and containments and things like that. We typically require more than what they would require, but there are rules and regulations separately that they are required to follow. The stormwater permit is just a, especially an erosion control and retaining water on-site.
As far as the noise goes, we've been to that property a couple times to measure things, look things over. The noise from the trucks that go down through the 98 is crazy. I'm thinking that we'll be fine compared to the noise you got now.
Hey, have you ever been up first thing in the morning?
Yeah, many days.
Out in a duck blind or in a tree stand like a lot of your neighbors are, and you heard the beep, beep, beep of the backup of a loader?
What did we just say?
It's not, it's not nice to listen to. It's a lot different than traffic going up and down the road.
Did we just tell you that we're going to, that we will have them there?
I'll be listening.
God bless you.
Okay, site plan.
And again, just because you say something doesn't mean it's going to happen. The whole world does not trust the whole world.
I know, we're all wires and coppers.
And that's why we have.
That's why we have that special use permit.
And you're good. I'm sorry, verification of storing fuel, just let's petroleum, just let's say anything. Will there be any storage of fuels or fueling, anything there?
Yes, storage.
And no maintenance, right?
There won't be any.
There won't be a fuel tank there? No, no, no.
No gas, really?
Nope. We carry, we carry our fuel on our service trucks, and we have accounts throughout the town and city to fuel our machines. It would be not very smart to take a loader from Dick's to there to fuel up and come back, you know what I mean? That's, we have no reason to store any fuel there, none at all.
Well, this is one of these times I want everyone to be happy, but I'm sorry.
I'm trying to work with you.
I, we want to help your business, and you did everything the right way.
Yep.
And we're trying to help you with whatever we can that will affect it. So is there any way during hunting season you could not use the backup noise?
We'll, they will, the backup alarms will be unplugged because it'll be on our own private property, okay? If it was in a.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, I'd say, actually not, okay, for safety purposes, on our own property. And again.
But there's also a safety factor for your vehicle.
For sure, for sure. And that's, you know, we do the same thing in our other shop. We have another property with millings that we unplugged them. When we screen the millings, it drives us crazy, so we unplug it just to help the neighbors as well as our own self.
If we were to leave our, this place right now, go to our shop, I can show you the loader that was down there, it's not plugged in. Sitting disconnected right now.
Look.
Everybody's happy.
We're trying to work with everybody and to work.
We're all trying to work together.
No.
There's no point pulling the wool over your eyes if you can see it in the ear and say, well, it didn't work. You lie to us.
That won't happen.
You'll see.
And I think it would be a nice looking piece of property to say we did the right thing, and that's, I'm up to prove that.
You're not going to have any signage or anything there? I didn't see anything on that indicating.
We didn't talk about signs.
At one point, I think, again, you're going to go by it now, look at it, and then go by it later and see a building with.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. We're not, we're not looking to make a second location, if you will. We're not going to like have a office there, we've got all that.
It's for disconvenience and.
No, basically.
Just head out.
Okay, did somebody make a motion on the site plan, or does someone want to discuss it more?
I'll make a motion.
Paul McCullough's making the motion, and Mike Dana's seconding it. No, it's on the floor. Is there anything, the site plan?
So we're going to include all the engineering requirements.
Contingent on the engineer's approval.
Contingent upon the modification that we put in with the.
The special use permit.
Millings should be on the finalized site plan that's filed as well, so it'll be defined on the site plan.
Okay, and so this is subject to next year. If there's problems, we'll talk about it.
That's good.
Okay, I hope we're good neighbors. Thank you. All we have is to take a vote.
Yeah.
I want to go home.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Mike Dana?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Paul McCauley?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, we'll see what happens. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda, the zoning officer report. That would be you, Matt.
Oh, yes, so just dropping back to the public hearing for, for the solar array. We did, just like any solar applications, we did get an influx of concerns and comments. Most of them were addressed tonight, but I just wanted to kind of rehash that and let you guys know that one of the major things was the line of sight, and I know that was discussed not only by the board last, last meeting.
With the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, we talked about.
So that was the main concern along with the screening, but we've already discussed that. Bergderry application is at the, is with the Z B A at the present time, so they are, they set a public hearing for that. That will be, depending on how they decide, will be coming across your guys' desk. Manning Squires and Henning was submitted to the county. That's on the agenda for the June meeting, so at some point in June, we'll be looking at site plan review for that. And we also had, if you guys want to think back to the Old Orchard III solar farm, they did contact us and request a, an extension basically on their permit because just work has not been started or, they're not looking to start anytime soon.